The Committee on Financial Management who have been pushing those who make financial decisions to say that their planning is rubbish. The fact they're not prepared to fight the government over the underfunding is ridiculous and shows no real character or honesty or genuineness. But we've been putting pressure on, there's been some response from the Scrutiny Committee here to be prepared to challenge the financial managers, we do need that.
It's one of the things as well, and that is that it'd be interesting to see what this NHS England guy is like because basically he is the enemy, make no bones about it. From what I understand, he is the number cruncher, the financial guru, and obviously the chances are he might know about figures but he'll have subtle ideas about dealing with the people and the situation they come into. How far we're confrontational with him is an interesting question. And if the Scrutiny Committee, fine, it's not counterproductive to give them a hard time, but NHS England guy, I think we ought to consider having a crack at it. You know, if you want to know about anger, you might be told about it by your best friend to hear it with his own ears. And then ideas, you know.
I think that this gentleman who's come to talk to us this afternoon, or tell us what he thinks this afternoon, is somebody who knows Derbyshire. Because I think he has worked in Sheffield and was a finance officer at Chesterfield Royal. So he will also know David Boyle, who moved from Chesterfield Royal to be the Chief Exec Royal Derby, and now of course they've got Burton Hospital under their wing as well. So I don't think he's, I think he left Derbyshire four years ago, but he is somebody who knows Derbyshire.
But on the other hand, we ought to play it by ear and see how it goes. I wouldn't think we should necessarily pull away, let's put it that way. But beware of what he knows yet, I agree.
Hello everybody, can you all hear me? Wave if you can, yeah, okay. Thank you for turning up today for the health meeting, Scrutiny meeting. I'm going to first of all, because obviously Mr. Bridock is here too, talking from NHS England, can you say that? I'm going to introduce the committee first and then, gosh, you start after. So I'm councillor David Taylor, I'm chairman of this committee, so.
Councillor Andrew Gilliam, vice chair of this committee.
Councillor Gary Mossen, just a committee member.
House rollover, the bar, the chairman of the committee.
Right, I'm just a committee member.
Hello, I'm Paul Bridock.
Sean Black.
Excuse me, I'm just, Sean, it's very hard to hear.
I'm the only one who remember to put the microphone on, I've got to tell them off in a minute. Yeah, it, what, tell the committee, please, could you put your microphones on when you want to talk, please, it does help to the public. Anyway, now I want to introduce Mr. Paul Bridock, who's from NHS England, you'll have to introduce yourself, I think he wants to have your words.
Yeah, so my name is Paul Bridock, I'm Director of Finance for NHS England for the North Midlands. So the area that I work after is Derbyshire, Nottinghamshire, Shropshire and Staffordshire. Just, would it be helpful if I just said a little bit about myself and my background? So I've worked for about 25 years in the health service, mainly providing organisations hospitals. So I started in the NHS in 1994 and worked at Sheffield Children's Hospital, and I worked there for nine years while I was the Director of Finance for the Royal at that time. And then in 2003, I moved to Chesterfield World Hospital, and I worked there for 11 years, was Director of Finance and was also Deputy Chief Exec, Deputy Chief Exec. I worked there until 2014, and then in 2014, after 11 years working there, I went to work for the Healthcare Financial Management Association, who are the professional body for NHS finance stuff, to do lots of research around NHS finances, but also to be a kind of key spokesperson for me, for the professional body of finance directors around the kind of status of the NHS finances. So I worked there for four years, and then I've been working at NHS England on the commission side since April this year. So I've served about 24 years working in the health service, mainly working within hospitals but all the parts of the health services as well, so that's just some background in terms of. So, yeah, that's my background, if anybody's got any questions on that.
Thank you very much, I think that's helpful. I better now go on to the main agenda, get on to the proper meeting now, now we've introduced ourselves. First part, to receive decorations of interest, if any, any decorations of interest? No, thank you very much. To receive apologies for absence, or being really, I very much doubt of any of those. Next item, to confirm the minutes, the meeting held on the 1st of October 2018. And just go through for accuracy, just in case, page one, page two, page three, page four, we've got to talk to the top, page five, and page six. Are you all happy with those? Can I move them, can I move one second please? Thank you. Everything on, everything worse than certainly. We're going to the main part of the meeting, which is Derbyshire's CCG's Financial Recovery Plan for 2018-19. You've got, I keep calling you doctor, I'm sorry, you're a mister, thank you. Mr. Paul Bridock, who is here to help us, is Director of Finance for NHS England, North Midlands. So I'm going to ask you for any questions, I think I know councillor Mossen is going to clean off, thank you.
Brian, good afternoon. I think the first thing I'd like to sort of start off with, because it's a big part of what we heard, is the Commissioners Sustainability Fund. Obviously it's paid a big part in what's been presented as, to us by the CCG. What I'd like to ask you first, just so we've all got a good understanding, is really if you could tell us what it is, why it's actually in place, and what are the mechanisms for it to work and support the CCG, please?
Okay, Simon, if you just start off, can people hear me now? Okay, yeah, okay. So if you just start off at the kind of the overall national level, the NHS has obviously given a parliamentary vote in terms of the amount of funding that it's got, and it can't exceed that vote, so it's got to stay within the overall limit. So it's around £114 million for this year. And implicit within that is that all NHS organisations have to be at break-even position, they're not allowed to go into deficit, and that's a statutory obligation on them in terms of making sure that they do break-even, they don't overspend, so the overall position is that if every organisation doesn't overspend, the NHS will stay within its resource limit, which it has to do. But there are nuances within that in terms of individual organisations at times will get into financial difficulties, or there may be exceptional circumstances where they need to deviate away from that. So what happens within the NHS is individual organisations are given something called a control total, which is effectively a figure that they have to hit individually as an organisation. Now, for the vast majority of organisations, that will be a break-even total. There will be a small number where they're asked to make a kind of surplus, because they have to, particularly the CCGs, have to have a 1% underlying surplus from previous years. And in exceptional circumstances, and it's not many CCGs, they will be actually given some leeway in terms of being allowed to make a deficit for a financial year, and that's the control total that's set. And that allows those individual organisations to actually have a period of time, a period of grace, where they can get themselves back into financial balance. And to offset that, what happens is that there is a national kind of top slice of the reserve called a Commissioner Sustainability Fund. So for 2018-19, that overall, across the whole of England, NHS England, that Commissioner Sustainability Fund is £430 million. So that's money that's not been allocated out into the system, and it's been held because they know that individual organisations, where they agree to control total, will not be, will not be balanced, and therefore that needs to be held to make sure the overall NHS is in balance. So each year we go through a process whereby, where we know there are particular hotspots, they will go into a separate process where they agree a control total with NHS England, and that's balanced back against the Commissioner Sustainability Fund. So for Derbyshire this year, the control total is £44 million. And what will happen, if Derbyshire achieve their control total, then they will be given access to the Commissioner Sustainability Fund, which will flow down from the centre, and instead of that money being held at the centre to offset the deficit, it will be passed down to the organisation, provided that they hit that control total. So does that give you an answer to what the control total is, and how it came about?
It helps. So the £44 million is the control total and not the £51 million they're expected to save?
No, so the control total is the deficit that the CCG has been allowed to make this year. The QIP, maybe part of them trying to make balance back to that £44 million control total. So the QIP is the total of their savings plans that they will need to achieve in order to be able to get the £44 million deficit.
Okay, so this is, this is obviously, the current fund is specifically for the financial year 2018-2019?
That's correct.
Okay, I believe that the fund actually pays out in quarterly segments, in arrears, and obviously there's assessments and targets based on the CCG. So what year is it actually during the financial year that those are actually paid out if they achieve the quarterly targets?
So that's correct, so for Derbyshire, there is a slight technicality, because a couple of the CCGs have been in a historic surplus, that the Commissioner Sustainability for Derbyshire will be £39 million this year. We're still negotiating with the Centre as to whether we can get that extra £6 million, but that's not, that's not been agreed at the minute. But the mechanism is that if they are achieving their control total at the end of quarter one, two, three and four, then they will be given a drawdown of that Commissioner Sustainability Fund. If they don't achieve it, for example, at quarter two, but then they've caught up by quarter three and are achieving it by quarter three, then they won't lose the quarter two payment, the quarter two and three payment will come down at quarter three, and likewise, by the end of the year, if they've achieved it, they will, they will get the full quarter one, quarter two, quarter three and quarter four payment, to bring them back to that £39 million.
Okay, so obviously we're in that financial year now, 2018-2019, we're coming towards the back end of quarter three. So has these assessments been taking place so far? And has any payments been made currently?
Yeah, so the assessments are made, of course, but I can't remember whether each one has been made in quarter one, two and three, to be honest, we all need to go away and look at that. But they are on track in terms of their forecast out to a position for quarter four to hit the £44 million control total, and therefore they will receive the full £39 million Commissioner Sustainability Fund if they achieve that. And we're tracking it on a monthly basis to make sure that they are on target to achieve that control total.
Right, and the last one for me, just now, is, if that is the case, then the Financial Recovery Plan, I take it you've looked at it across the four CCGs? So you are effectively treating them as a combined CCG, although they're not in real terms yet. And the other thing is, there must have been some agreement on that sort of financial recovery plan. When was NHS England sort of presented with a plan, and when did they actually agree? I take it it was before the start of the 2018-2019 financial year?
So just to give you some background, the original, I mean, we've had to negotiate hard with NHS England at the centre in terms of the size of that control total. So if you put it in context, it's £44 million out of the total for England of £430 million, so it's more than 10% of the overall kind of contingency for the country. So the process that we went through was, you go through a national process in terms of first agreements on control totals prior to the beginning of financial year. So the initial allocation that was given down to Derbyshire by NHS England at the centre was for just £90 million, and that was based upon a £35 million forecast out for last year, which actually came out to £40 million, less 1% of the allocation, which was £15 million. So the first kind of tranche that came out for 2018-19 was only a control total of £90 million. We then went into detailed negotiations with the centre through April into May to actually set that, what we thought was a more realistic total in terms of what would be achievable, given the size of the QIP plan, and that was eventually, it went up to 30, I think it's £38 million, and we eventually got it up to £44 million. So that was the process that went through, but it did flow into the early part of this financial year, because we were negotiating hard to try and, to try and get that control total up to £44 million, so that they got unachievable, what we thought was an achievable QIP target, stretching but achievable.
Okay, my question. This committee was informed of the situation in Derbyshire a short time ago, this summer actually, that's what we're finding, we finally, we got to find out. And the CCGs are in a difficult position, cutting budgets and de-investing services at pace before the end of the financial year, is what they say. How did this situation say, change so quickly from a surplus, which in 2016 had a surplus, to the present time to be in a massive deficit? And what checks at the time were being made by NHS England over this happening?
Okay, so you're right, going back to kind of 2015, 16, the CCGs had always been in a surplus position. I guess a couple of things have happened over the last two or three years is, you know, the NHS has outgrown about 1% for the last few years, and I think it's become more and more difficult as time goes on in terms of trying to kind of achieve the level of savings that are required, given the size of the kind of allocations that are being made. And I think secondly, as the CCG moved from a position where it was in surplus, and those QIP targets became more challenging, I don't think that the CCG were properly geared up for the level of savings that needed to be made. And what they were using were non-recurring measures, so reserves that they've got, or slippage of investments, if you like, to non-recurrently offset those savings. And therefore what eventually happened was that caught up in terms of the recurring position. So yes, you're quite right in terms of the CCGs, it came off fairly suddenly in terms of that. So yes, it was in the north at first, and then in the south, going into 1718. And I think what's happened since is that NHS England has looked at its monitoring measures to actually start looking more at the underlying position of the CCGs, to make sure that it gets an earlier warning when people are moving into financial deficit situations.
Are you dealing with one CCG or four CCGs?
So we're dealing statitarily with four CCGs at the moment, but the plan is from April for them to merge into one CCG. But all the figures in terms of the control totals and Commissioner Sustainability Fund are split between the four different CCGs.
Councillor Bearfoot?
Thank you. Could you actually explain, there are four CCGs that are now merging into one, so is there, are some of the CCGs more, I would call it guilty, of getting themselves into this position than others? And are those of us who live in one particular area going to pay the price for the failings of these CCGs who've gone into deficit? I would also point out actually, I mean, what recommend, what have the CCGs done in terms of getting in touch with the government basically, and saying to them, there is not enough money to fulfil the obligations of the NHS in this area?
So in terms of the individual CCGs, yes, Arowash and Hardwick have traditionally been in a surplus position. 2016-17, I think it was, when North Derbyshire moved into a deficit position, and 2017-18, when it became apparent within the, within the south, south of Derbyshire as well, so that they've gone at different stages in terms of moving into deficit. So it's the south and the north which are by far the biggest two, which went into deficit. And Arowash and Hardwick have more latterly found themselves in kind of those positions. So if I give you the, I mean, the 2017-18 closing position, end of the year position, was that North Derbyshire was £18.5 million in deficit, South Derbyshire was £19.8 million in deficit, Hardwick was £2.7 million in deficit, and Arowash made a small surplus of about £410,000. So that was the position in 2017-18, in terms of the relative position. In terms of the CCG, kind of, I guess lobbying, if you like, in terms of resources, that's not the job of the CCG. So the job of the CCG, the job of people working within this service is that they are not responsible for the level of allocation that's given into the NHS in terms of the resources. Their job effectively is to make sure that it stays within its financial resource limits, and it tries to ensure that the resources are used to maximum effect in terms of clinical outcomes. They're not there to lobby on behalf of the NHS for additional resources. What you tend to often find is that they are sort of think tanks or other groups that tend to do that, or politicians, but it's, it's not the job of the CCG to do that.
Thank you, councillor Allen, I think you're next.
I'm surprised that the CCG don't, what you're interested in, or. Yeah, guilty. Just on the last point, because I've got a lot of questions, but to follow up on the last point about the role of the CCGs in terms of trying to allocate more money for their services, they obviously identify that there are going to be massive deficits. You're not saying that they don't talk to NHS England to come up with a view that they can afford £4 million or whatever is a reasonable figure? I can't believe that they're not actively involved with yourselves to say, this is the figure of money you need, can we get some more money before we start implementing the massive cuts of the £51 million that's taking place, or planned to take place this current year? Which then brings me on to my substantial point. I mean, the history of this is, I mean, you've said yourself that you've not been in this role too long, but obviously you're very aware of the finances from your history and from the roles you've had before. But we've been in long discussions with Chris Clayton, or tried to, we've tried to get him to talk to us previously, he's eventually come to this committee at least twice, is it three times?
Four.
Or is it four times? And the question's been the same, all the time, tried to identify the level of cuts that's planned to take place this year. Now, we're not naive enough to believe that you're not going to implement it to a million pounds worth of cuts between now and the end of the year. It hasn't been one of the points we talked about, and it mentioned in his last letter, which I didn't raise, I presume you've seen the correspondence and things, he clearly sees that it's not our role as a Scrutiny Committee to actually look into it, and he thinks he's doing the job right by just telling us what's going on. The point we've consistently made is that we need a Scrutiny Committee, because we're the only, if you like, democratic link into the health service, because everything else is appointed or non-democratic. So our request has been consistently, where are these cuts going to hit? Now, there's been lots of rumours about, you know, you talk about community nurses, you talk about wards, I mean, the whole history of the North Derbyshire in terms of the promises over the wards that were short, Walton was short, Bowles over Playcross, all these things have been promises, and then we've found that the cuts have been implemented irregardless of what the consultations have been. So this is in the background from our frustration, that we just seem to be speaking to empty voices. The last letter, as I say, effectively says, this is not your job, we'll consult you on to learn disability and psychotherapy services. We just fundamentally disagree with that, and the part of the purpose of talking to you is to say, one, to understand the process, which I think is a little bit clearer, because obviously, from what you've said, the cuts have been taken place from March last year, April last year, which is not, were not the impression that we were given. We were thought these cuts have been discussed and consulted on, not implemented over a period of time. So that's quite a surprise from our point of view. So what we're effectively saying, these cuts aren't acceptable in terms of the population of Derbyshire, and not an acceptable, also unknown, because most of them, we still don't know where they're going to fall. There was, there was suggestions that Ilkerson Hospital, Unit Hospital would have a ward, shouldn't in that last time, that was said, no, not going to do that. So where else is it going to be? The voluntary sector, which is, if you like, a very, a small amount of the total budget, but a very emotive, very important part, which is generating a lot of concern from those organisations, effectively they want to be cut completely. Now, I know there's some discussions about maybe not doing that, but my worry is that these plans are being implemented by stealth, and that we'll find that their cut, all the other services are cut, we still don't have the detail of that. And that's the thing where our frustration is really strong there, we've not got the detail, we can't comment on what we don't know about. Now, I know that's not directly you, and I'm not accusing you of that, but you're clearly in a position from NHS England to, to look at that figure, that £44 million, say, is it acceptable to have £51 million cut for the health services in Derbyshire pending the £21 billion we're going to, or the NHS is going to get in a few years' time? Once those cuts have taken place, then it's almost impossible to go back to the levels of service that we've got. So I think our frustration is, one, I think we've been led on the god of a path to certain extent by not telling us the truth of what's happening. And two, how can we influence, if you like, if NHS England is the body that allocates the funding, which it is, how can we influence yourselves to say that we need more money to actually maintain the services in Derbyshire prior to the extra money that's coming in from the top? Anyway, I'll stop at this stage, but it's a bit of a rambling question there. But within that, I think you can appreciate there's a frustration from our point of view, we're not getting any answers, and being led astray, and you know, what is actually happening in terms of Derbyshire's cuts from this whole year? Because we're not getting that feature from, or by the Chris Clayton, or anyone else. And again, it's a bit like, you know, those changes took place, there were four chief execs at CCGs, they all were made redundant, and all right, Chris Clayton's there to do the job, but he's not got the history of understanding some of these things, and understanding, I think our frustration, which we're feeling.
Just before you, just before you answer the question, can I just ask the public, please, can you refrain from clapping and, it's putting, I'm putting for the people, I want to get the answers, I don't want to, we don't have a, I know you're supportive of it, and I understand that, but I'd like just to, I'm not saying joke, the joke, I would like to hear a gentleman speak, please, thank you.
So I'm not sure where to start with that one. Sorry. Dave used to work at Chesterfield Royal Hospital when I was over, I'm councillor David, so I'm used to getting grilled by Dave, so. In terms of the first point, yes, yes, we do lobby in terms of the Derbyshire position, in terms of within NHS England. It's not the job of the CCG, what I was trying to say, to lobby politically at the national level for the level of funding that comes into the NHS. I think quite clearly what I tried to say earlier was that we do try locally to actually put a plan in place that we think is realistic and achievable and is fair to Derbyshire. So the fact that Derbyshire's been allowed to make a £44 million deficit this year, and that's more than 10% of the overall deficits that have been allowed, and if it achieves that, it will be given £39 million worth of cash, so that effectively, that debt, that overdraft that's been driven up will be effectively written off, I think is a fairly, you know, that's been a hard negotiation to get on behalf of Derbyshire, and we've had to push that a long, long way. Perhaps the other thing to say that I haven't said as well is, Derbyshire is above where it should be in terms of its allocation. So if you look at the fair, fair values allocation formula, that looks at the population for Derbyshire, and looks at health means, et cetera, it's covered, it's something like £25 million more than it should do in terms of its fair share allocation. So that is taken into account, you know, so it's a really hard, it was really hard for us to go back at kind of sub-regional level, and up to region, and up to the national people in terms of putting a case forward, because what was, came back to us was, that's by, you know, it's the second biggest control total in the country, you know, it's 10% of the overall, and that should, they're already receiving £25 million more than they should be, so why should we justify giving £45 million overdraft on top of that? So that was a really hard sell, and that was done through the CCG, through ourselves, up through the region, to the centre, and that's. And in part of the, in terms of the overall equation of the QIP programme, or the savings target, £51 million, that actually benchmarks alone. So it benchmarks a 3.3% of the overall allocation, the national average is 3.7. For people in that kind of level of deficit that Derbyshire's in at the minute, there'd be an expectation that that should be towards 5%. So again, it was a hard, it was a hard, it was a hard discussion to take place around, is only achieving 3.3%? And part of that was about, it's not being geared up in terms of its QIP programme, and QIP programmes shouldn't be about making cuts, they should be actually about examining the spend, and making sure that it takes place in a more effective way, and actually if anything, it improves quality or doesn't affect adversely quality of care being provided. And what we, what we argued for was time to actually, for the new management team to come in there, and to actually take those plans forward in a more considered way, and to get themselves more up to speed in terms of then bringing Derbyshire back into balance. So I think Derbyshire actually, if I listen, I think Derbyshire, if I look at it from not all those points of view, I think you may feel it's a hard, it is hard, it's hard for everybody given the financial position within the NHS, but relatively, it's not, it's not that hard compared to others, if anything, it's been given an easy ride in other places are. And actually, and actually, if I was a resident, if I was a resident outside of Derbyshire, and I was beneath target, in terms of, you know, I'm getting £25 million less than we should be doing, on behalf of the population, they might be saying, why is that money going to Derbyshire, and why are Derbyshire being allowed to then spend another £45 million of the money that's having to be held back nationally, not being allocated through the system? So I'm playing devil's advocate there.
Yeah, very similar.
I am playing devil's advocate, but actually, this issue of, you know, it's been given a hard time, I think actually NHS England, and I'm talking from some who works, has worked in Derbyshire for a long time, and represents the region in terms of my role, I think, you know, I think we've pushed that as hard as we can in terms of the national position. So that just kind of puts some context on how it works in terms of trying to work through with the centre, and actually to represent, you know, the locality for Derbyshire. And that's the process that we effectively went through, and where we're at, and we'll go through that process again now, it's beginning again for next year's allocations, and there will be expectation that the £44 million will come down, because it's got to move towards a break-even situation, and they'll be spending resources that remain available to, that will be the process that we'll go through in the next three or four months. Now, I understand that that's a really difficult position for you then, in terms of health scrutiny committee, given that backdrop, where you're at. And yes, one of the things I would take away is the transparency of the programme, and how much transparency have you been giving around that?
I think if I can butt in, yeah, that's where the transparency in my view hasn't existed. And we've tried numerous times to get some detail of where the cuts are coming, and we've had very, very little information. And in fact, we were, again, naively thinking that this was going to take place within this financial year, but no major things have happened. Now, clearly, lots of stuff has happened, which I think we have a right to, well, the public has a right to know, because we are, if you like, the voice of the public in terms of scrutiny. Now, how can we achieve to find out exactly the impact of those cuts? We're certainly not getting it from Chris Clayton, because his letter says, I don't think we need to talk to you about it. So how can we, one, we have a right, I believe we have a right under legislation to look into all those cuts, despite his view that the minority does is something that should be consulted on. Are you the body who can give us that information, in detail where the cuts are taking place, the £51 million, what's happening to that? How does that make up? Because we're saying we're not getting that from there. And then you can go on to the bit which is very public, and I say it's for my department, it's still very vocal, is the voluntary sector who are being decimated by the cuts. I mean, in my view, I've always had a view of the voluntary sector is not, shouldn't be there to provide major services, it's the part that adds value to a service. The voluntary sector's changed over the years, and it becomes more and more actual a direct and providing service. But if you look at some of the things they do, to slash their funding completely, I think he's completely wrong, and I feel there'll be some sort of future. But at the end of the year, they're still actually implementing the cuts, which we haven't had any detail of, and I think that's, the discussion we've got to have with Chris Clayton, but I think you've been here, and obviously you've got that level of those cuts. Can we ask you for the detail, how £51 million can be made up for the cuts in all of the county?
So the answer is I'm not going to go up the CCG head and do that, and just pass that information down to you, what I will do is go away and ask the CCG why they've not been transparent around that information?
I'm clear, I mean, that's the view of the committees, we've not had that transparency, I mean, we're not being fair, you know.
So I can go away and take that away, and ask the CCG that question, and ask for that transparency. So yes, I'll certainly do that. I think it's dangerous to use the word cuts all the time.
Well, that's my philosophy. I mean, there's a political side to that, I mean, I see, to me, I see as cuts. I'm not against efficiency, because, I mean, one of the arguments outside, people say, the NHS, it's like, you're local authorities, local authorities, swine, if you're efficient, you wouldn't have to make these cuts. I use the word cuts because I genuinely believe that's what it is. We've got a service which the NHS, most people in this country are proud of, and when you see it deteriorating, to me, that's a cut, you know, not a saving. I think saving has a sort of warm feeling, a cut has a guttural feeling that you're losing something you already have, so.
So I agree with that to an extent. So in the last role that I did with NHS England, a lot of that was actually in research into the level of savings that can be made. So, yeah, generally, if you look at the long run in terms of efficiency, so that's providing the same services in a more cost-effective way, because of new drugs, new technologies, et cetera, it's around about one to one and a half percent is the long run. When you get into things like 3%, then you're into having to rethink about how you provide those services. But certainly, you know, prescribing is a big part of the quick programme within Derbyshire. That is not about cutting the level of drugs, that's actually about using drugs in a more effective way. New drugs will come on the market, and some drugs that actually aren't provided the benefit of, you know, as people share. So there are elements where you have to constantly reexamine those areas to actually say, are we, and benchmarks are clinically actually to other places to say, are we providing the most cost-effective services? And that's what, a quick programme should not be about cuts, it should be about, is a concept I'm going to say, about value-based healthcare, okay? And what that means is, what the NHS needs to do is actually maximise, if you look at value, value is basically how do you get the most outputs from the inputs that you get, and that applies to all industries, for healthcare, it's about how do you get the best quality of care for patients, given the amount of money that you've got. And it's actually not sometimes the cheapest solution, it's the most cost-effective, is what it is striving for. So you're looking for actually, how can you potentially save them while actually improving the quality of care? So for example, reductions in lung to stay within hospitals are a good example of that.
Yeah, but can I, sorry, Chip, following that line of discussion, one of the big things about it is to get people out of hospital, because hospitals aren't the right place for most people. We had this long debate about the community beds in North of the county, and they've been cut tremendously, or they're still being cut. And everybody talks about care for people in the community, the best place is either at home. Now, I find it difficult to accept that you can, through the STP and everything we've talked about, how you can then not agree that community care is important. And if you're talking, one of the sessions was cutting community nurses, now, you cut all these people, and you're not going to be able to provide that level of care within the community. So in a sense, it's an investment system leading in there, not a reduction. And I can't quite, well, I can't understand how we can actually achieve the objective of getting people out of hospital quickly into some sort of community-based accommodation while they rehabilitate to get back then to back home with proper support, and then that's when adult care and things come in on the feature. But it's the bit where the health service is actively involved in getting people out and supported to be able to get home, and if you cut those levels of service, again, we still don't know how many community nurses are going to be cut, whether the cardiac nurses are cut, whether the Parkinson's nurses, all these sort of things are very emotive, very important features for keeping people living independently in the community, which everybody talks about as being right. And I can't see how that won't be massively affected by the level of cut which is taking place. And I accept totally about your fringe, not your fringe, but the important bits about prescribing and bits like that, but the prime thing that I think we're very concerned about is how do people, in terms of their independent living and community support, their quality of life in them, because it's quality of life which happens, which is important. And my always fear is that if you remove the middle bits of community beds, people inappropriately end up in nursing homes and residential homes like that, they never get out of there, because that is the end. And in my view, that reduces their quality of life. So we need to input more money into community service, not less. And I see these, these sort of cuts affecting the community services much more than we can really accept, and that's the frustration we've got, so I expressed it. Thank you, Chip.
So I agree with all of that. I agree with all of that, shall I?
Yeah.
And I think where Derbyshire's at at the minute is, as part of its merger process and in terms of getting itself back into balance, it's been asked to do two or three things. And one of them is actually to produce a commissioning and kind of clinical quality, clinical and commissioning strategy about how it sees the way forward. And it's just, it's going through that process at the minute, so that will be finalised at the end of December, and that will be part of them planning in the next three years in terms of where they invest.
That will be public document.
And again, I'll push for that with the commissioning group, but actually, a large part of that is exactly that, about investing in the community, to actually release resources in areas like the community, where we've got people in hospital beds that aren't meant to be in hospital beds.
Well, that was the whole basis of the STP, we sort of crumpled and everybody ran to the guns.
So in terms of this year's programme, it is where it is, you know, and actually, they've got a problem because they've, you know, they've kind of run up against the financial problem, therefore, in my view, they're doing a transactional or a kind of transformational programme in terms of their quick programme, what they're being pushed hard on at the minute is, what's your clinical and commissioning strategy in terms of where you're going to invest and disinvest over the next three years? And underpinning that, what does that mean in terms of the money and finances, and how will that flow through? So that work is in train at the minute, and that is being assessed by NHS England at the regional level, and it will be at the national level in terms of, not only is it the right thing to do, but in terms of their merger process as well.
Thank you very much. I've shut the council, I don't know if you've had a full council, I think, have you had a longer than full council on that one? Thank you very much. Council Aston has been waiting patiently, so, Council Aston?
Thank you, Chip. Well, it's a statement, and it's a follow-on what Council Allen has been saying. This committee is concerned about the proposed disinvestment in the voluntary services. Voluntary groups around the country support many people who otherwise would not have to rely on the natural services. Cutting voluntary sector support is a false economy and is likely to bear in future NHS budgets in future years. And we're very concerned about the amount of investment that could be cut off the voluntary services, and we feel that, or we don't want to feel, that this is just the tip of the iceberg.
So again, I hear those concerns, I'd go back now and talk to the CCG leaders, I can't comment on the specifics of what they're doing, but I do hear the message about considering that.
Thank you for that, I hope you are going back to them and telling them, because they need to be told. Next one is Council Mossen.
Right. Firstly, I do agree with you on something, when you talk about the terminology of the quick, I think in this case, it's definitely the wrong phrase, and it is quite clearly a financial recovery plan and should be thought of as such. I'll briefly say about the fact that Derbyshire is above allocation, well, how is it allowed to get that way? There must be some questions. And obviously, once you do have money, you spend it on services, then irrespective of how it got there in the first place, to suddenly withdraw it would be another issue. And then you actually made a comment about the plan, the financial plan that's put into place, the recovery plan, the fact that obviously you want it to be achievable, so do we, because obviously anything put in place, if it does go wrong, it's the people of Derbyshire that are going to be affected. Now, we saw things going wrong in 2016, 2017, I believe it, in the November of 2016, North Derbyshire really started to suffer. It went into direction with yourself, August 2017, I believe, and at that point, obviously, you started having greater input to support all of the CCGs through the 2017, 2018. Now, you've already mentioned about this final outcomes, but obviously, there were quips in place for all of those CCGs during that financial year. Only Harry Washer managed to achieve it, and North Derbyshire and Southern Derbyshire failed quite dramatically to achieve those quick programmes. So that, obviously, going forward to what we're seeing now, particularly with the pace of it, doesn't really give us any assurance that, one, that they'll be able to put them together in a sustainable manner, and that it won't do irreparable damage to, obviously, the NHS services in Derbyshire. Any comments on that with regards to, I mean, how confident are you that these plans, bear in mind, again, we are talking a three-year plan, not just this year, how deliverable are these plans?
So going back to the first point, about the allocations, it'd be above target, it's mainly in the north, actually, and they're about 5% above target. That won't happen overnight, they won't take that £25 million away. What they do over a period of time, it's probably three to five years, is when the new allocations come out, you may get marginally less than the national average, for example. And that's how they correct it over a period of time to make sure it doesn't create instability. I was just using it as an illustration of a factor of, you know, the relative size of the allocation. So that gets addressed over a period of time, which is the medium term, and that doesn't get addressed by taking money away, that gets addressed in terms of the, we know on average, the next five years is going to be 3.4% additional money as well, it may end up being 3.2% or 3.1% or something like that to Derbyshire to bring it back in line with the fair share allocation, so that won't be through a kind of, assumes of additional cuts or quips or whatever. So that's that point, just on the, just the distance from target. So I agree with your assessment as well, I think, you know, 2016, 17 was the time when North Derbyshire went into deficit around £8 million, and then that was followed in 17, 18 by £24 million in the north and £18 million in the south. And I think a large part of that was that you had disparate management teams, you didn't have a proper quick programme that had been set up, you didn't have a turnaround director, you didn't have the resource that was being put in place to actually be able to manage a quick programme of that size. So if you see, if you go elsewhere, and you see where they've had those higher levels of challenges, they've kind of, they've really upped their game in terms of their capacity and their capability and their experience in there in terms of being able to deliver those programmes. So one of the things we've been working on during this financial year with Derbyshire CCG is about their management team, so they moved from four to one management team, and I actually think they've got a very, very good, credible management team now together. And they've appointed a turnaround director who's got experience from elsewhere of having worked on quick programmes, have delivered 5%, 6%. So they've brought in capacity, expertise and knowledge to help them manage their quick programme. And I've certainly since April seen a big improvement there in terms of how they're managing their programme, and how likely, therefore, they're going to be in terms of delivering that. So that's sort of the process that we've gone through with them in terms of really upping their game in terms of that area to make sure that they do deliver. And the bottom line is that they will have to deliver the vast majority of their quick programme if they're going to hit the £44 million control total, and they are on track at this point in time to do that, and we follow that through on a monthly basis to track their progress around that. And we go in once a month and do a deep dive into the quick programmes to actually assess where they're making them and have a forward look in terms of where they're going to make sure that we get an assurance that they will deliver those programmes.
Okay, obviously, there is a lot of savings to be had by looking internally, and I'm sure that this leadership team will look at that and deliver those as quickly as possible, and they will be quick, easy wins, but it will get harder, obviously, as the term goes on, to find the rest of the savings. Obviously, we've got to achieve the savings to be able to reach the control total, to get to the, obviously, financial position we're looking for, but the more pressure that they're actually under, obviously, the more severe the cuts could potentially be and the more damaging. Okay? So again, if you just look at that, you're saying about the merge, now, this is another thing that has worried me, and I think it's a great thing that they are going to merge, because I think they will ultimately work better as a single CCG. But obviously, the process of going through that merge is going to be quite a painful process. Have you got any other CCGs that are actually currently doing a merge with four CCGs? Or is this an isolated case?
No, I've got one that's actually now going from next April, from April afterwards, it's got six CCGs merging into one. So they're not alone in terms of the status.
Are they under the same kind of pressure that Derbyshire are under with financial constraints?
Worse.
Worse. So they're probably the number one biggest control total, are they?
No, absolutely not.
All right, okay, that's fine. So, but what I see is, I see it being quite a demanding thing to put an organisation through. Obviously, it wasn't just the chief officers, it was the chief financial officers, I believe, that also went. So we're talking about the top two senior positions actually in the CCGs being lost before we bring in a new team, and obviously, Chris Clayton's only been in post since October 2017, I believe. He has brought his own team, so I just see the demanding nature of the work he's got ahead of him. The thing that worries me is all this is based around cold, hard figures. I know from the NHS guidance that you will deliberately put CCGs, particularly the ones with bigger deficits, under quite challenging programmes. From our point of view, seeing that these challenging programmes could affect the services, this is where we've obviously got an awful lot of concern.
So that issue around the merger of the management team and the finances come hand in hand to me, and yes, it's a very, very challenging agenda that they're going through now in terms of trying to get to that merged organisation, in terms of getting, they've now appointed to the senior management team in terms of the quality and the calibre and the experience team that they need to be able to deliver in that size of programme, and the three come together, you know, they won't deliver a quick programme of that magnitude unless they've got streamlined processes, they've got, you know, the four CCGs working as one in terms of their kind of commissioning, and they've got the right senior management team in place, so the three come together as far as I'm concerned, you know. And I actually think that Derbyshire's got a very, very good management team, I think they've got an extremely capable individuals and accountable officers, in terms of Chris Clayton, who's got a very strong experience background from elsewhere, you know, he's a clinician, he's a GP, you know, so it's, you know, in my view, they've, you know, they've got good quality of people there, and they're going to be working within a much more streamlined system as a merged organisation. And so that will ease their agenda once they get through that process in April. That's fine, thank you.
I'd rather not come at them all then. I've got to ask you a question, and it's been dragging me throughout the whole meeting. Why did you settle on three years for the recovery plan? Could it have been longer?
Sorry, why?
Why did you settle on three years for the recovery plan? It's quite, you know, that quick, could it have been longer?
So I think we go through a process every year to set in those control totals, and I think the judgement that we try and put forward to NHS England is to actually set it at a level where we think they've got a quick programme that's achievable. So this year it's 3.3% compared to 3.7 average, four, five percent elsewhere, but our assessment was that's, given the new management team and given the need for them to bring in extra capacity and experience to deliver that programme, that's as far as it's going to get pushed in terms of being able to deliver that. So what NHS England will do is push it, if you like, to get it back into balance as soon as they can, will give it a realistic timescale, and therefore, there's an expectation that if you post a deficit, then you'll have to move by it. Um, and therefore, there's an expectation that, uh, if you post a deficit, then you'll have to move, move by at least one percent of your allocation back, um, towards balance. And for, for Derbyshire, that's fifteen million. I think they've been pushed harder, I think they've been pushed to, to move back and, and to try and balance that over a two year period. But that discussion is only just beginning to take place now for next year.
Thank you very much. Any more questions? They're looking quiet today. Oh, thank you.
Is that better? Sorry about that. All right. And, and so it's quite easy for people to talk into percentages because when you're talking about only twos and threes, it doesn't sound a lot. But when you're talking about the effect that it's having, I just wonder, is, do you think Derbyshire is in a position to actually, to get through the winter pressure that is going to come on them? Are they, are they well set or is there any finance there to actually cover the problems that they're going to have?
So they, they, they phase their plans accordingly. So they, they know that there's a need for more capacity during the, the winter months. So that's part of the whole planning process to actually take your, your capacity up and down. So they are planning for that within their, within their programs. Uh, you know, fifty, fifty one million sounds a big figure, doesn't it?
It is a big figure.
Yeah, the allocation for Derbyshire's one point five billion. I mean, they're huge figures, aren't they?
Well, the problem is, that's just this year. And the worrying part is some of the services we're going to, I know we don't like talking about cuts. Unfortunately, cuts is what we're getting. Not for everything, but, you know, the big part is, once you've lost the service, you've lost the service and it won't come back. And that's, that is what's worrying us at the moment.
So I understand that, but as I say, I think what you need to really do is get hold of their clinical and commissioning strategy, they'll air wide for the next three years, what they're planning to do. And that will, that will be underpinned by the financial strategy, which will give you the figures behind that.
Well, that way they can come in and they're not actually telling us, uh, the control assessment, they're not telling us what we're actually trying to do.
So I've heard that message loud and clear.
That works like a fantastic massive trouble. Can you keep quiet, please, Liam? I'm just trying to get, any more questions?
Well, do you, do you come back on, on to clarify what?
I'll let you go first then.
Sorry.
It's all right.
You can't get this done, I do apologize. I think there's several things that always said you'll go back and try and get the information. I think we need to clarify that. I mean, I presume people may know, I mean, there's the strategy that is obviously quite critical, so we need to go and see that. You say you're monitoring monthly the level of cuts that are taking place. I think you need to be able to provide us with some of that information because in the end, it's the public who've got a right to see that. And we, we're clearly not getting that from the CCG themselves. So we need to have that. And, and, and what are the bits that you promised to bring or to look at? And I think we need something in writing to say you will, you know, once you're gone from me, you'll come back with some, or you'll give us that information or get that information.
So I, I will make clear with the CCG, um, so that you're saying that they're not being transparent with that and place pressure on them to be transparent around it. So, thank you, Chair.
Okay. Is it working? Turn yours off, that's it. Mine's working now. A bit weird, I've got a big titch in it now after I've abandoned it. Um, if you could keep quiet between the questions, it does help. I'm sorry, you know, I'm trying to be, I'm not stopping normally, but I do want it, it's an important meeting. Um, we've got Council Mossen, I think, leaving now. See you again.
Yeah, to, to be honest, this is something I was going to say earlier. I decided against it and, because it's not actually a, a direct question, but it's, it's a way that, um, the whole thing's being looked at with regards to how deliverable it is. And obviously, in this first financial year of this three year plan, particularly with the fact that the merger was actually taking place. Uh, so we haven't had any details apart from a couple of, of cuts, I will call them cuts. But obviously, there is a lot of savings to be made. I mean, one of the big things that I wanted to see personally is before there was any talk of disinvestment in services, that the merger would be progressed to a stage where you could actually, uh, take from it all of the, uh, economies from bringing the CCGs together and running that way. And again, from, from now, obviously, we have had previous meetings and I'm not sure how current all the information that we've received is. And I'm, I'm very curious to know how that the CCGs are actually achieving the savings required to access the ESF, uh, funding. But I would, I would really love to see them take every opportunity to actually get efficiencies, true quip savings before they actually started. Uh, because there's also a lot of alignment, there's a lot of variation between the CCGs. I would like to see that obviously services are fairly aligned as well. So everyone in Derbyshire is getting the same good level of service. Um, but I'd like to see that happen before we start even thinking about making any serious disinvestments.
So I think it's the same issue about transparency, which I've, I've said several times, I'll, I'll, I'll take back. Um, um, they're always going to have to make a quip, you know? Every organization's going to have to make a quip or a SIP program or whatever because as I said earlier, um, you've always got to reexamine how you're spending money on health. There's never enough money to spend on health. And actually, you've got to make sure that it's been done in the, in the best way in terms of outcomes. And as I said earlier, new, new drugs, new technologies, new medicines come around, changes in practice will always mean that you've got to constantly reexamine that. So regardless of the merger process or bringing in a new management team, they will be expected to do a, a quick program. Every organization does and therefore you can't just put it on hold for a year. I'm afraid that's not how the world works.
Any more questions? Keep our way, we're fairly likely, actually. I'm going to now do the recommendation, what the council, what the council recommends and ask the members what they think about it. Um, I put it forward, the committee receives the information from NHS England to receive, thank you. The response letter from Dr. Chris Clayton on the thirty of October is noted and remains under consideration by the committee, this committee. A letter will be sent to Dr. Clayton and NHS, NHS England in respect of the information gathered to date. And the committee reserves its right to refer this matter to the Secretary of State or Health. We're still holding that to you, we might have to do that one day. Further consideration will be given at the next meeting of the committee in January. Are we happy? Would you like to move that to? You happy with that? Okay? Put that forward then, I'll move that recommendation. No one in favor, hands it fair? Thank you. So finally, my final thing is to thank Mr. Bridock, I keep, and Dr. Bridock, I keep promoting you. But thank you for coming and I think you're very brave to come and stand there on your own. Not with, with however people, being about seven or eight people. So thank you for coming and thank you very much. And hopefully, we can move forward with what we've got today. So thank you very much and thank you all for being, well behaved.
Thank you.
And I'd better just say I close the meeting as well, you can't go home.